All right. Ladies and gentlemen, yes. I'm going to go ahead and start reading us in for community participation this evening. Sorry. We're going to go ahead and get started for community participation. It is the duty of the chairperson of the school board with assistance from the county sheriff as necessary to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner and to limit discussion to topics relevant to the issue before the board for consideration. Persons addressing the school board are advised to limit their remarks to those relevant to the pending items. No persons in attendance shall be allowed to voice remarks except as recognized by the chairperson or the clerk of the board after audibly stating their name and whom they represent if applicable. No person shall bring into the boardroom any sign, banner, or other such item which would interfere with other members of the public in seeing, hearing, or otherwise participating in the meeting, provided that models, photos, maps, charts, drawings, and other such demonstrative materials intended for use in a presentation by a specific person shall be permitted. Upon recognition by the chair or the clerk of the board, the speaker shall address the school board chair, confine their comments to issues of public concern relating to the operation of Warren County Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are defamatory to specific individuals or tend to violence or breach of the peace, refrain from obscenity and vulgarity, stay within allotted time, stop speaking when directed by the chairperson. Groups or individuals in the audience creating an atmosphere detrimental to or disturbing the orderly conduct of the meeting will be asked to refrain from such conduct once. Any additional disturbance after the warning will not be tolerated, and the chairperson will ask the county sheriff to remove the individual, group, or clear the boardroom so that the board can conduct the business of the school division. When recognized, please state your name for the record, whether you are a county resident, parent of a Warren County Public School student, or an employee of the school division, and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay. So we'll get started. It's going to be three minutes for everyone this evening, as I just said. If we hear a lot of interference from the audience, we can move apart. We can go out into the hall and have individuals come in one at a time, but let's try to stay respectful this evening during our community participation. Mr. Valentine, did anybody sign up?
Yes, we have four speakers that have signed up in advance, the first being Jackie Mocella.
Hello, Jackie Mocella, two kids from Warren County Public Schools. I'm going to read a passage that I read online. It's awesome, and I hope that you guys think about it the next time when you write a policy, send an email, or discuss children, anything like that. "In society and schools, we have to think of things needing to be earned. It's an American ideal, and a marriage revealing. And everything needs to be paid for to be earned. We scoff at the idea that anyone deserves anything without work or suffering, but humans have needs no matter what they can give in return, unrelated to labor or effort or judgment. We need food, water, shelter. Do those things need to be earned? No, we deserve them innate, merely by existing. Do kids need to earn human needs? Our job is for nonsense, to meet the needs of kids, and it's innate to kids if they need food and water and shelter, and to use the bathroom, and have things of their own, and earn love. One shouldn't have to earn love any more than food or water. Every child everywhere deserves love at every single moment, including and especially the moments when you may not think they deserve it. They are all at all times deserving of love. Love does not exist universally. The kid in front of you needs your loving practice, and it is your ethical and moral and professional and human responsibility to put that love into practice every day for every child. And because it is innate to us, because it is hardwired into the primates, Indian, beautiful, messy social brains that we have, we deserve it too. Human interpersonal love that says you exist, you are real and should and can thrive because that's what humans are supposed to do. We have a right to be, we have a right to exist, not because of government, or God, or a document or decree says so, but because we are. We are entitled to exist and to thrive. Humans are loud and messy and complicated and contradictory, and all humans, big, small, all colors, sizes, genders, sexes, need your love all the time in every way. So be loud for these kids. Be loud and put your love into practice in the words you use, yes, but also the actions for the sake of humankind, act with love towards children. Find it. You have to put the boundless capacity, as it is hardwired into us, into practice. Put that capacity into practice for that kid right there in front of you. Whatever they do, whatever they say, because of it or in spite of it, that child needs your love, not someone else's, yours. It is your calling as an educator, but more importantly, your duty as a human. All children, merely by existing, deserve the love they need. Practice it. Every word, every policy, every lesson, every message, every day, every child, everything you do, no matter what they do, no matter who that child is. Oh, and Ms. Low, we know you're not lying.
Ashden Doffmeyer, board.
So I imagine that my work, that I'm a student at Warren County Public School, I think to co-op games, they talk to you about how long we have to... So today, I only have five minutes, and I know I can finish my lunch for that time because lunchtime is a social time for most meetings. That's probably how we can start our friends, because most of us don't have classes with our friends. So we all probably need to see lunch as a food opportunity, but also as a social construct. And it's just hard to take our lunch because we don't have enough time. So we only have about 20 minutes to get out of our classes, walk down the hall, get in line, wait in line for about five to 10 minutes. Go find a seat to eat our lunch, and we are also expected to talk to our friends now at time, and by that time, you will have 10 to 15, or only five minutes to eat our lunch and talk to our friends.
Hi there. My name is Emily Lorin, and I have been a resident of Warren County for 37 years. I'm here as an inherent of a freshman and a JV baseball player at Skyline High School. On March 26th, it was brought to my attention that the decision was made that would not allow the JV baseball teams from either school or lately at the stadium moving forward. After a Freedom and Information Act request by Karen Patton about communication between Jane Meadows and Bucksworth confirmed this decision. I cannot stand here before you this evening and provide a history lesson on this on the ends of the outset agreement between the county and the school board when funds were exchanged for renovations at Bresby. However, I can confidently say that the high school baseball team needs to play a game as they only have practice field with no lights at their respective school campuses. The solution provided is for JV players to play at Champ 53 field, which would then hurt at Front Royal junior and senior weeks, not to mention the condition that that field is horrendous and more than likely unsafe in my opinion, not fitting for any high school athletics. The reason cited in the above amount was to prevent the field from overuse and maintenance. It's a baseball field. It was designed to be played on, and as overused is an issue, the field should be limited during the high school baseball season, which is roughly only 60 days. Being was not ready at the start of the season causing delays and cancellations of preseason games for our players, and also for the rest of the season, these baseball players have been padlocked up, being eliminated proper time to warm up and/or delay games, and locked out of the utility closet to help maintenance in preparation for field on game days. Earlier today, I was baffled to find out that the decision of JV playing at Bean Line and the ends of Warren County Parks and Recreation. There was a meeting today held between Dan Mendes, Tiffy Walker, and Jane Meadows with a parent of a Warren County student and community advocate, Karen Patton. Karen was told verbally that this would no longer be an issue. Unfortunately, based on the historical handling of few recreations in this county, forgive me if that's difficult to know water. It was also mentioned that this issue would just go away after schools built home fields at their campuses. At this point, you may wonder why I'm here in front of you. I'm asking you to take back control of this decision, a decision that affects our school athletes, a decision which the school board has equitable interest in. Demand for agreement between the school board and the county that clearly states that both JV and varsity baseball teams from both high schools can play their home games at Bean Bresby Stadium. Remind the county that these renovations were brought to completion with the help of the school board, which is in exchange for this. If mainly so the field of being is truly concerned, let these players be part of the sudden maintenance during their season. Let them make the skill needed to keep a baseball field in top shape that can hopefully return to our community in the future. Let them take pride in the appearance and longevity of their home field. Make that a part of the future agreement. Lastly, based on the equitable contributions of the school board to the county and Bean Bresby Stadium, I urge you to form a committee to ensure that future units stay fair, stay equitable, and current. Thank you. Bye.
Good evening, everyone. I haven't been coming to many of these meetings lately, and so I know there's been a lot of back and forth over a lot of things, but I wanted to come and speak tonight. Well, I just couldn't say anything until I read those kids talk because they warmed my heart so much, and it made me so proud, and it made me think of my years in this high school in this very room. This is my very first protest, right here. And this school system, the things that public schools can provide are unparalleled. It provided diversity that you can't find at a private school. There's kids of all different types of walks of life and different things and life experiences that they can share, or their classmates share, an open mind for people to use in the future to make our world a better place. Our arts programs are vitally important in that, and I'm so glad to see that they seem to be thriving and doing better than I've seen them do in a really long time, really warmed my heart. And then during the recess, I went outside and I got to see all the wonderful things that are happening there. And so the reason that I wanted to talk to you all is because I know that it can be really hard to sit up here and have to listen to negativity week after, month after month, or every couple of weeks, however often you want me. But we have so many positive things going on. There's always going to be in any system, in any group of people, there will always be a small few that are having trouble getting along. And what we should be doing instead of focusing on the negative is we should be focusing on the positive and figuring out how we reach other children to go in programs like those art programs we heard about today, because those are the things that help people be better community members. And that's what our community needs. We need people to work together. And the good news is, is if there are certain people that don't want to work together, there's a majority of you that do, and you have the power to keep your head down, stay away from the negativity, and just get it done. Because we have a wonderful school system here, and we have wonderful kids here, we have so many things to be proud of, and that should be our focus. And I just wanted to reiterate how proud I always am of you, Andrea, and since you do an excellent job, and I'm really proud of how you sit down and take it at that and say your use whenever you just package it. But I'm really proud of you, Mocella. Thank you for everything that you make you do for us, and thank you everything for all you guys do. And let's be excited about our schools. I think there's so much to be excited about. That's it. Thank you.
That was the last speaker to sign up in advance.
Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Go up to the roster more.
You can come right up here and just...
My name is Thomas Maneri. I'm representing myself, I suppose, or a parent, or a taxpayer, however you want to put it. Are you ready for me to begin?
Yes.
I have only recently moved to Front Royal. My brothers lived here for a long time. I love it here. It's beautiful. But unfortunately, in this county, like so many others in the United States of America, there's a real problem with the school system, and I intend to be much more attentive to them now that I've seen the kind of dirty, cool, mind manipulation and lies that I've detected coming from some of the people at this bench. I've heard a lot of inti... I deserve a living because I'm alive, not because I've done anything to earn it, produced anything, but just because I'm here. You need to create your own every whim and feed into, say, whatever delusion or concern or feeling that might be causing a disturbance. These are distractions from actually addressing the real problems, systemic problems, not systemic racism problems, but systemic accountability problems that I have been finding out about about in public schools. I send my kids to private school because never in a million years would I subject them to the kind of education, we'll call it, that public schools provide. I hear they have to hire additional security officers because there's a huge problem which increases your budget, which increases my taxes. I don't want to pay you taxes. I don't send my kids to your school. The... Despite all the roses and flowers that I can't... Ignoring the problem doesn't make you go away. You can't say, well, let's just focus on the positive, guys, and then have something terrible happen, be like, oh, my gosh, I never see it, I was too busy focusing on the positive. The only way to solve the problem is look at it, be clear about what the problem actually is, and if it's not a problem that can be addressed in a school setting, it must be addressed out of school. Whether that's by a parent or some other authority figure, it certainly doesn't mean allowing you guys allowing dangerous or disabled, mentally upset, disturbed people to interact with people who are not that way, thereby leading to more likely to have harm.
I'm sorry, is quiet in the audience?
I pay taxes so that you can send your kids to school. There's been a huge increase in the amount of population, but no increase in the amount of people that have been going to these middle schools, to this middle school, which means that your budget is going up despite the fact that we're actually paying for both our kids and yours. I accept that. Oops, there.
There are 30 minutes. I'm...
Sure. All right. Oops, sorry. Look.
No, you're...
I have...
Hello. You're not speaking, yes, Sarah Downs, and I'm actually speaking on behalf of Lynn Downs. Lynn Downs is a Warren County resident, and she is the executive director of the Arc of Warren County. The Arc of Warren is a parent-led advocacy organization for children and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. This is what Lynn is writing. Developmental disabilities can range anywhere from autism to Down syndrome to brain injuries. There is no disabled individual that is the same. Every person is unique in their disability, and therefore needs individualized education plans that are created in collaboration with educated professionals, parents, and students. These plans should only be accessed by those working with the student directly or by the education professionals the school has hired to evaluate needs. There have been remarks made by members of the school board and tonight that make me incredibly concerned for our students with disabilities. Speaking from over 30 years of personal experience that she has had dealing with her own childhood autism, she can promise you that her child's disability is never irrelevant. May it be his obsession with Star Wars, or his anxiety about going to new places, his disability is woven into the fabric that makes him good and bad. When discussing our children with disabilities, we must always remember that they are individuals deserving of every human right and opportunity as other students in this county, and most of all, they deserve safety for themselves and everyone they work with. If safety cannot be accomplished for our student with disabilities in our county, then our community must make the choice as to how they would like to proceed with that individual. One parent shared with me that in her experience of getting her child moved to a specialty school was in our area, she said it took two years of her child being a flight risk and showing aggressive tendencies to get moved to a school that knew more about his disability and that could keep him safe and engaged. And this was after she became a vocal advocate for her child, spending hours of time calling several IAP meetings, requesting his FERPA records, and making sure that his behaviors and tendencies were recorded, and threatening a lawsuit. And then, and only then, was he moved to a better school. We know how hard parents have continually had to fight for our own children in this strong school system, and this fight will continue. Parents, the Arc of Warren is here to support you and help advocate for you. If you need anything, feel free to call us at 540-692-3970. And to the school board, remember, individuals with disabilities are not alone with. We are continuing to keep a watchful eye on you. We will hold you accountable to your actions and words. Thank you.
Does there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Hello. Welcome to everybody. I just want to say, oh, I didn't have more time. But my mom left because, you know, y'all were set there. But let me just say this, all people need to be educated, all people, whether they're disabled, which I am now because I was in a car accident, but I had all the high learning of other school systems, Washington DC school systems. So with my dream and dream that I had was my car accident, I had to go back to learn how to read. It took me five years, and I still have complications from them. So for us to say that this ain't what people cannot learn, I disagree with you because we can, and we do, and we will, but we just have to have educators prepared and have money and resources enough to help us. As a person with a disability now, and as a person that worked within the aftercare system before I had an accident, children learn in different ways. You have your five senses, and that's what I learned when I took my aftercare and childcare development courses. So they can be taught, and we just have to learn as educators and people who want to help these children to learn in the way that they best are able to learn. And we have to give them the resources and help their parents if they come from a one-parent family, a two-parent family, two parents who might have to work a lot. We have to give the resources to help these people and not say, oh, they're the bad kids because of this or that, and just help these ten. That's all I have to say on that.
I'm in chief, please.
This seat, can you?
Yes, please.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? That, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Another question about the consent agenda of the board here.
Uh huh.
Um, the... Do you need that closer? The discipline report on the consent agenda, I know we had said, we were told that Skyline Middle Schools hadn't been completed for February because somebody was out. The office has, it doesn't appear that that's been updated, though, since...
It is, it's on there, it says updated.
It's been updated?
Yeah, it says updated.
Well, I saw where we've got the updated, where we have the updated discipline report that still lists only the three. Let me look back, I've got to refresh my page. Maybe for...
This is...
I see March. Yeah, the February still lists as only the three. In your update, you had said that we would only see three for Skyline Middle School because it hadn't had a chance to be updated yet?
Well, that was, yeah, that was for the month of March. I guess it was, maybe there is an error on the...
It says February.
It says February, but it's supposed to... This is the March report.
Right. I see the one column says March 2024, and now on the right-hand side, it says February.
Yeah, I'm just not catching that, but that should, this should be the March report.
Okay. So it is fully updated?
So that, yes, that to the left, where it says March 2024 is the full report. That was updated with the data that was entered.
Well, if you look on the next page, though, it says Warren County Middle School, and then it has March 2024 on the left side, and then it has February on the right side. And that one, those seem accurate, but then for Skyline Middle School, the February still does not seem accurate.
Well, those are ones that I think came in after February 29th.
Okay.
So it's additions to the previous reports, maybe.
Gotcha. Okay. So all of that has been updated.
Plus, at the timing of when the meeting was, they didn't get in in time.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Let me see.
Three. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I need to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Second, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Great. Next up, we have reports. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to say thank you to the Warren County Educational Endowment for the great work that they do and the partnership that we have with them. It has been an honor and a privilege of working with them to be able to provide these opportunities to our teachers, to our students, and they're a great group of people to work with. To see the showcase down there and what happens in our school, that's just a little sliver of some of the great things that are going on in our schools on a daily basis. And so I do appreciate the great work that they do and the partnership that we have. The, for the rest of my report, we have seven weeks of school left, so we're heading down to the finish line here. I would like to just let everybody know to be on the lookout for end-of-school-year activities. You know, there will be some field days, there will be some trips, be aware of what's being pushed out by your, your child's teacher, or classroom, or school. Also, we will be gearing that towards our SOLs for the end of the year. So, you know, as we make this final push, there are a lot of activities with graduations and other things happening, so just please be cognizant of what your school is pushing out and come and join us.
Thanks, John. Onto school board reports. Let's start that.
We'll start with me, please. So, I'll just go with, as we know, the school board approved the proposed budget last month, on March 20th, and I voted against it, and somebody will ask me why I voted against it, and I neglected to say why I voted against it. So although it's been passed, for the record, I just want to say why I voted against it. Basically, there's two main reasons, one secondary reason. The first main reason is we have four schools that are not meeting the federal standards, and from what I can tell, we didn't make many adjustments or additions to the budget to allow for more resources in these schools to ensure that we get off the PDOE's list of schools that need academic improvement. This is a high priority for me, so, I mean, maybe it's in there. I didn't see it, I would have liked to talk more about it. The second main reason is that at that work session that night, some school personnel stated that several key employee categories in our schools are seemingly underpaid, nurses and instructional aides. I would have liked to have had seen some research done on this topic to evaluate whether our nurses and instructional aides need to have increased pay, but again, I ship the sale for this year. A lesser secondary reason was I believe that the entire system by which the budget was created, to my end, seems a bit backwards, not very collaborative. The school board budget subcommittee had meetings with various people about the budget, but the entire board did not have much time to spend dissecting it and looking into it very deeply. I do appreciate all the efforts put into the process, budget process, by Dr. Ballinger, Mr. Valentine, and the school board budget committee. As a first-time budget reviewer, I would have appreciated more time to digest the information and ask quality questions before having to vote on it basically the same night it was presented. Based on discussions that the board of supervisors had last night at their meeting, it appears that many of them are also unsatisfied with the school board budget process and the ability to clearly see where money is spent and where the priorities for the upcoming year are. Again, hopefully, if I'm on this thing for the whole rest of the year, it could be, we can improve that for next time. So that's that. Secondly, I participate in Sedexo's Future Chef competitions on March 28th, where I served alongside Dr. Funk and Principal Vakken-Helmek judging the food creations of four fifth-to-seventh graders. It was a great event with some creative dishes, and I commend Nicole Kinsey with Sedexo for her efforts and her... Congratulate all of our rising future chefs. I look forward to be involved, invited back next year to judge. It was a good event. Finally, there's been some talk recently, both in the school board meeting and online, about the role and function of the school board. about the role and function of the school board. And whether school board members or the school board as a whole has been overstepping its boundaries recently, and I'm going to take a moment to weigh in on this. According to the Warren County School Board Policy AE-R, the school board's policy responsibility is primarily to establish those goals, programs, and procedures which will best serve the educational interest of each student. It's charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the division. The board must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy, agreed, by selecting a superintendent to implement policy, and by evaluating the results. From the policy regulation, it seems clear that the school board not only hires a superintendent and sets policy, but also evaluates the results. If the results are not as they should be, then the board has the duty to act to ensure that its goals, programs, and procedures are being followed. Secondly, Warren County Public Schools Policy BBA states, under school board powers and duties, it states the following. The school board adopts policy to provide for the day-to-day supervision of schools. It sees that the school laws are properly explained, enforced, and observed, and secures by visitation or otherwise, as full information as possible about the conduct of the public schools in the school division, and takes care that they are conducted according to law and without reckless deficiency. From this policy, it seems to me that the school board is in charge of the entire operation, with the powers given to it by the voters and by the state law to manage all aspects of the public school system, meaning that it would be very difficult to find an aspect of management that would not fall under the jurisdiction and oversight of the school board, and therefore, the attempt to cry foul in school board overreach is without merit. Obviously, good management practices would dictate that micromanagement is not the best method of management, but when some members of the board believe that the superintendent or his designees are not properly doing their jobs, then sometimes, micromanagement becomes necessary in order to ensure alignment with policy directives and laws. And regarding the school board's ability to view student records, that's something people have mentioned a lot, it's under the section of student records, Policy JO states, "The Warren County School Board maintains accurate and complete records for every student enrolled in the public schools in accordance with all federal and state laws." If we, the school board, maintain accurate and complete records, it would seem to follow that we can have access to them. It also says, "The Warren County Public Schools discloses education records or personally identifiable, identifiable information contained therein only with the written consent of the parent or eligible student, except as authorized by law. Exceptions which permit this are to a school official who has legitimate educational interest, and a school official is a person appointed or elected to the school board, one of them. A school official has a legitimate educational interest if the official is performing a task that is specified in his or her position description, job description, performed a task related to the student's education, or performing a task related to the discipline of a student." From all this information, it's clear that the school board has the right to get involved in a variety of aspects of managing Warren County Public Schools. We are not simply advisors to the superintendent, asked to chime in when appropriate, but rather, we actually are the superintendent's employer, and as such, we are tasked with having the most oversight, authority, and ability to make decisions for the betterment of the school division. Whether we, as the school board, should get into the specific details about this or that situation, or provide input on how the superintendent should or should not act in this situation, may be something that can be discussed, but whether we have the power or authority to do so is not open for debate, based on our own policies. To think otherwise is to misunderstand the purpose of a school board. Finally, we began a new school board as of January 1st, 2024, my first time doing this. It's now been about three and a half months, and I'm not sure I can say that we've actually done anything. We certainly begun a number of things, such as the same-page document, the Parents' Rights document, we began editing discipline policies, had lots of discussions of FOIA's and board roles and responsibilities, heard lots of presentations on things such as substitutes, special education, school calendar, and the budget, but other than approving the budget, what exactly have we done? Very little. I think we need to regroup, set some goals and objectives, and begin delivering on them. I joined the board to help improve the schools in our area and to try and help with innovative ideas which would better our Warren County Public Schools students. I'm not sure that this is happening, and I want to see a change as we move forward. Thank you.
And next, let's see, ring, Ms. Lo.
And I'm sorry, before you start, just while anyone's speaking, if everyone in the audience could just keep it quiet, and something's kind of echoing in here, so I'm having a hard time telling if it's like a echo.
Um, so my update, I did see the production of Chicago at Skyline High School that they put on, the Four Spring Break, it was excellent, they have a lot of really talented musicians, actors, singers in our school system, so I really enjoyed that production and want to say thank you to those votes. I unfortunately was not able to make it to the Warren County High School production, I froze, and I would have liked to go, but my daughter went with her class and said it was fantastic, so I trust that it really was a great production as well, that's everything that I've heard. I hope that all of our families, teachers, and staff had a restful spring break, and are excited to tackle these last seven weeks of the school year. So that's, I think my update, I do want to just follow up briefly on my comments from our last meeting. First, I just want to say I stand by everything that I said. Everything that I said at that meeting and at all of our meetings is true, to the best of my knowledge. I also tried really hard to be clear and state my views as clearly as I could. Second, as I said, I do have some concerns about how we, as a board, are handling some issues, and that's why I felt morally compelled to speak out and bring those up so they could be discussed. My intent is just to open up communication among us on the board about those issues, and this is something that I believe that we, as a board, are going to be discussing at our work session next week, which will give all of us a chance to state our opinions and ask each other questions and talk about our beliefs. I do think that we, as a board, may have different views of what our responsibilities are, which is okay, and to some extent, that's to be expected. But since this is the heart of our work and what we do, I just feel like it's really important, and I look forward to having that conversation about these topics with you all.
Thank you. Dr. Funk.
Thank you. I want to thank our students who spoke today from Warren County High School during the school reports. We could certainly hear your passion and your words and, and what you were doing there and your involvement. And thank you to our student who spoke about lunch. I truly appreciate any student who comes and shares their opinions and thoughts during our comments. I think you definitely nailed it with, you know, it's lunch, and it's a social time, particularly at middle school and high school, and I'm reading, that's how Dr. Ballinger taken some notes there, and I'm sure he'll be following up on that, from that student. Over this last month, I attended a chair, vice chair joint meeting with the board supervisors. I participated along with Mr. McFadden in the Future Chefs Contest. This is the second year, I think it was, or third. It's, it's a great turnout. I think if I remember correctly, there were originally 24, 25 original entries, and that they narrowed it down to five. I always walk away with at least, you know, well, with five wonderful recipes, but there's always ones we take home and try as well. And I did attend the evening of kindergarten registrations. I was at Eagleson Morrison Hilda and Ressie Jeffries and just walked around to see what was happening, how were we doing kindergarten registrations, and that was really great to see our, our new parents there. And then I did have, have the opportunity to, we speak with some school personnel and parents and constituents. It's been a busy beginning to spring. I do want to, and I know Mr. McFadden mentioned about the budget timeline, one of the things that popped into my head, and I'd like to throw this out as an option as we continue to move forward, I think possibly, we as a board, come together and maybe, I'm just throwing out October-ish of this year, along with Dr. Ballinger, and talk about, because, you know, budget, budget is always happening. It's, it doesn't, it's not any, you know, something that stops and starts necessarily. But I'm thinking, you know, and hearing all the comments I'm hearing about, just, you know, nothing is intently done purposefully, but to make sure we are all on the same page, if we maybe start in October, and at a work session and say, hey, this is what we want our budget timeline to look like, this is what we, you know, I know Dr. Ballinger meets with his cost centers, and we, I think we could easily put together a timeline and expectation. We know people's schedules and things change like that, but I think that's something we could be proactive about in moving forward for that. The second thing, you know, he spoke about policy, and that is one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight. We have a lot, you know, to celebrate, but I do have, I feel we've helped share some of my perspectives on a couple of things. So beginning my turn on the board, we have discussed, as he mentioned, the review and update for school board policies. However, we haven't made significant progress in this area. I feel as if we've almost been piecemealing ideas within, you know, different fragmented goals that we have. So these comments are directly related to what I feel is somewhat of our stalled advances in policy review and development. And I'm going to, there's a few policies that I want to highlight. One, Mr. McFadden has already discussed, I'm not going to read them word for word, but I'm going to highlight a few of them and some points from them. The first is Policy AD, Educational Philosophy, which was last reviewed in August of 2021. It talks about, you know, what are three of our educational philosophies are, and I think that's something we should take a look at. We all want to be on the same page, so we need to definitely take a look at that. It talks about providing necessary training and dedicated leadership, it talks about treating all members of the school equitably and with respect, and it talks about allocating and uses fairly, alloc, it's a really, it's really small here, allocating and uses assets fairly and efficiently. So again, just not necessarily that we need to change something, but we need to make sure we understand what that philosophy says in policy. The second one is Policy AAR, that was on my list too, Mr. McFadden, and it's the board operational goals. This has not been revised since 2003. And I'm not going to read this again, but the board shall seek to achieve the following goals. It says, "To concentrate the board's collective effort on its policymaking, planning responsibilities," and then it goes on to share, you know, what those goals are. So again, I think that was something that you had mentioned. And the last one is Policy AFA, which actually, again, was brought up, Mr. McFadden brought that up to us via email in February, and it is the Evaluation of School Board Operational Procedures. It was last revised in May of 2019. And again, it's, it's, you know, it's not too lengthy, but it does say, and I'm going to paraphrase a few of the points, "School board reviews its performance annually to ensure its proper discharge of responsibilities to the community. Elements include a self-evaluation process," I'm sorry, "Elements included in the self-evaluation process are: Board members are involved in the development of the evaluation instrument procedure, it's completed by individual board members submitted to the chair or designees for compilation, board members meet all present to review and discuss results, and each conclusion is supported by evidence. Then the board develops goals to ensure proficiency and strengthen weak areas to improve applying efficiency of the board." So I chose these three specifically tonight, as they addressed, address and govern this board and the actions that we take. They're all found in Section A of our policies entitled Foundation and Basic Commitment, but also I want to share the Section B of our policies, his Board Governance and Operations, which also gives our board direct governance guidance. So, you know, as I said, we've been discussing policy review, it's much needed, no doubt. And what I want to suggest this evening is that our board start immediately to look at the Policy Sections A and B, because that is us as a board. You know, we need to take a look at us, we need to be evaluative, we need to be objective, and we need to look at those policies and hold all of ourselves accountable. And this pairs with something I had heard recently, that, you know, our board at times is not, is looking like we are a bit dysfunctional. I'm hearing that, and so I want to improve on that. I want to improve on our board functioning, I want to make sure that we, we are starting there and we come out as a cohesive board. We're elected to, and tasked to lead our county schools. Research shows a strong relationship between effective school board practice and improved student achievement, and high-performing school boards lead by example. So we, we are the example, we must lead by example, always considering, is this what is best governance for our entire county? Is this what's best for Warren County and our future? Is this what's best for our students? I want us to come together, I want us to be able to talk, I want us to be able to be, talk openly, freely, and respectfully within our board, and they cooperate, cooperate with each other, even in our times, and most importantly, in our times of fierce disagreement. Because it does happen, and it's okay, we can, you know, disagree, but we need to be respectful. Because at the end of the day, everything we do is of, you've heard me say this before, it's the will of the board, and that's what governs us. But the aforementioned policies, those are our standards, and from my perspective, you know, right now, I think we need to, we definitely, we want to bring ourselves together. Furthermore, I, from my perspective, you know, I do understand that when you're elected and we, and you accept a role as a public servant, such as school board, you know, we do need to be able to talk, discuss, disagree respectfully, not take things personally, we need to remember that our role is to serve our students, our families, our constituents, our Warren County public schools. We should be providing accolades to one another, holding each other accountable with support, and then challenging each other with our individual thinking, because we all bring five very unique and important roles to our job. You know, we have had several times that have appeared to be that we, that that has not happened, and I don't want that to continue for our board. My, my second thing this evening is to talk about our functioning as a board, you know, I've kind of already talked about that. One of the things that has just concerned me is how we are functioning together. You know, we, we have had, most recently, some emails that have not included our full board, and it does concern me, because we've, we've talked about the all-on-same-page communications one-pager, that's not, and I'm conflicted, because if we're not all receiving emails, we're not all getting the same information, so it's not conducive to us functioning. You know, I, I did address some of my concerns in a few emails dated here in March or April, but again, I just, my goal, my thought process is that we need to be able to collaboratively incorporate everybody, even through our agreements and disagreements. So I have, and I am forwardly requesting that this be an agenda item for us to discuss of the late board communication, you know, so that we can have that discussion. And I want us to discuss it, because I just don't want that to continue to happen. It's not facilitative of more discussions and cooperations. I feel it's actually very opposite, and it's unfavorable towards us working as a team towards our goals and executing our duties as a board. Because under all conditions, we need to communicate, we need to communicate with all parties, that's what we're elected to do. And we don't, we don't have to agree or disagree. We don't even have to like what each other says, but we absolutely have to be willing to work with each other, we have to be respectful. Everybody, this team brings a unique and valuable perspective, and we should never be unwilling to work together and have conversations. I would venture to say we wouldn't expect this of any of our staff to be unwilling, and I don't want us to be unwilling either. Again, even in those times of fierce disagreement, we need to be respectful. So I just want to close with this, what I have stated is my opinion, it's my First Amendment right to state it based on my experiences, as is every single person on this board, as that, as does everyone in this room. And it's just that's my opinion, it's based on how I have perceived situations. You can agree with those thoughts, you can disagree, and that's okay. It's okay if you agree, it's okay if you don't, my feelings won't be hurt. I'm here to serve as one of our five elected board members, to make the best decisions I can for our students, our staff, and our community. We are all here to do a job, and we want to make sure we all, I would like to make sure we all execute those duties to the, to our best as, as a full board. So that is all I had for this evening.
Thank you. Then, Salem.
For again now. I first wanted to thank Warren County High School for the lovely presentation and the displays put on by the Endowment and Ms. Marlowe. Warren County really does have just so many wonderful teachers and staff and good kids and hard-working, honest administrators. And so, yes, obviously, we always have to be appreciative for all the wonderful things that we have. However, that also does not mean that that has to be mutually exclusive from, from addressing the areas of concern. If I had a broken leg, I wouldn't say, oh, well, I've got three working appendages, and so, ah, never mind the broken leg. Oh, well, the broken leg leads the attention, so we have to address it, find the root cause, figure out what went wrong, and fix it. That's not a bad thing. That's how, how progress is made. When I was asked to run for this seat, I did so because in the homeschooling world, we do think outside the box. And, and every child has their own individual educational plan, and that is, that's a beautiful thing. And I want to bring that way of thinking into the public school system. I hear a lot from parents who are struggling with finding their children the appropriate avenues at which they can, can best learn. So yes, absolutely, I agree with, with what was said tonight about, about children with special needs and making sure that we, we get them whatever is, is needed. The baseball update, the baseball field being stadium update, yes, been looking into that. The 2007 school system, we funded the renovation of Bing Crosby Stadium. We spent $4,52,496. So yes, we absolutely have the right for our students to play at that stadium. And I just wanted to thank, I spoke with Cheryl Color. She's been incredibly supportive of this. Rich Jameson has been incredibly supportive of this. Dolores Oates even had wonderful things to say, and though she's moved on to the state level. She has incredible historical knowledge of what, what the baseball history with Bing is. And we have to provide our kids with, with access to that stadium because kids who are involved in athletics are not going to be prone to being out vandalizing things and getting into trouble. So we have to be willing to support that, and as Boards do change every few years, it's very easy to forget those types of verbal agreements. And so we do, as a school system, and we will be discussing it, I believe it's been suggested for the next work session, to get that into writing so that we have protected our children's right to that stadium for perpetuity. Tom had touched briefly on the, on the budget items. One area, as, as we go back and revisit the budget and adjust to account for the cuts set that were made. One area I'd like to see brought back is the, the proposed stipend for bringing experienced teachers into Skyline Middle School, where it's needed. If that takes extra money to get them in here, we need to get them in here so that we can have some progress made. I also do still reassert the issue that I have with giving raises to staff members who are on plans of improvements. And I do not believe in rewarding that, that bad behavior. In light of the news story that came out today down in Newport News, if we remember that there was a teacher who was shot by a six-year-old in first grade, eight felonies have come out. The vice principal has been charged with eight felonies. There is talk that the School Board members may also be facing criminal charges. And that right there shows that we have to, we have a duty, as has the article said. Boards and administrators, we have a duty to report and be involved and know what's going on to make sure that we do the best that we can to prevent situations like this. Because we hear hindsight is 20/20, and you look at every single one of these instances, and when things get ignored, swept under the rug, or, oh, stay in your lane, that's not, that's not what you should be doing. No, that's what we signed up for. We should be engaged. We should, we should be involved. We should be helping. We should be using our common sense. And I, again, reassert, you will, anybody who emails me, you will always get a response. I will try my absolute best. I might not be able to fix it, but I will try my best. And then when that said, not to add to our list of items to work on, seeing as we have so many that have been unfinished. But I think it is important that we get a teacher's bill of rights in place as well, teacher slash staff member. So that way, we have another avenue where teachers know very clearly laid out what their rights are. No teacher should have to be unheard because we look at Newport News as the example. There were concerns raised, concerns ignored, and somebody could have lost their life over it. We have to be willing to hear our, hear our staff, hear from our students. I love that we had a student come in and speak tonight. Hear from our parents. We have to be willing to hear. All of this starts from a place of communication and being heard so that we can make things better going forward. That's all I have.
I appreciate everyone who showed up tonight for the Warren County High School presentation, the attendance awards, and a huge thank you to the Warren County Education Endowment for the work they do to support our teachers, students, and the entire school community. As we're in the height of budget season, I think it is really crucial to highlight the areas that our budget doesn't cover and appreciate the efforts of our community in providing the extra support to fill some of those gaps. And it was great to see the created, the creative ways that they're using that grant money. The Mountain Vista Governor's School Governing Board had the opportunity to meet at the Laurel Ridge Campus on March 21st. We had, we had presentations from students showcasing their incredible talents. Students shared their artwork, a recent coding challenge they participated in at Lockheed Martin, and the robotics team presented a challenge they were given from the Winchester SWAT team. Hopefully, at one of our future School Board meetings, we can see some of the, the great challenges and educational opportunities those students are having at Mountain Vista Governor's School. Ms. Salin's already touched a little bit on the, on Bing and the things that are going on there. We do have it on our April 17th work session agenda, and Ms. Colors is also kind of chiming in that it sounds like the Board of Supervisors are on board. So it's mostly just a matter of having that public discussion about it. I'm not going to repeat policy codes that Mr. McFadden's already touched on, but I will address some of the public concerns following our March 6th meeting. To be absolutely clear with everyone listening here and at home, our Board does not have the ability to access student records, camera footage. That includes classroom cameras, security cameras, or otherwise personnel files, or any other documents of a similar nature. We cannot get into Power School. We have no sort of access on our Chromebooks or otherwise to do that. If there is a misconception in our community suggesting unrestricted student record access by our Board, it is a fallacy stemming from social media, and it is untrue. Yes, at times, our Board has received detailed information regarding isolated events in our schools. None of that information was provided to us or received by us with malicious intent. It is time to move forward from that. We are sitting here tonight at Skyline Middle School. How many community participants have we heard from over the past several months asking for our help as a Board and as a community at this very school? The bullying and the back-and-forth drama happening on social media is unproductive, disheartening, and it will continue to destroy the morale of our teachers and administrators. And ultimately, it is negatively impacting our students' education. We have highly skilled, dedicated teachers and administrators, and they deserve the support of this Board and this entire community. They are responsible for educating our children every day. They deserve a Board and a community willing to put their efforts toward positive change. They do not deserve to have their school community, their passion, at the center of social media hate. And while I am not in charge of anyone's social media pages, it is unprofessional and inappropriate, and I am asking every single person to stop. We are all here in this room because we believe in public education. We are ambassadors for our school division and our community. Choose to share the positive. I know it may not get as many likes. It may not get as many comments. It likely won't even start an argument. But share out information from our schools. Share about sports, science fair projects, FFA fundraisers, theater productions, academic achievements, DECA win lists. We have so much happening in Warren County Public Schools that we can talk about. Help those students raise funds for the activities that they want to participate in. Help all the teachers that are out there having their grants showcased. Help them think of ways that they can bring creativity and excitement back to their classrooms. Each of the five members on this Board have varying interpretations and perceptions of our roles and responsibilities as Board members. We have spent hours together in training sessions, and we absolutely can work well together, and we can find common ground. We were elected to do a job, and to do that job, we have to get back to functioning as a Board. I believe the same-page document that's been referenced several times that we created almost four months ago now will be in place, it will be a great place for us to start, and I look forward to finalizing it at our work session next week. Thank you all. Move to the action agenda this evening. First up, we have the E. Wilson Morrison Elementary Camper Area Serving Line renovation. Ms. Kenzie.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
How do I go?
Just kidding.
Okay, Josie, though, today I heard from Martens, and they are, they did the roundup campaign. So we're going to get another donation from Martens for the after-school sports meals. We're dwindling down. We have a couple thousand dollars left in there that the sports teams are using up for after-school meals. And they're, they're going to be putting another $10,000 into that pot. So we haven't gotten that yet, but that's going to come to us, I guess, over the next month. And so I'll bring that to you to accept the donation and all that. But I just wanted to tell you I found that out today. So I'm really happy about that. So the community do that roundup. I love that they do that for, for that after-school meal group. So that was good news. Tonight, I am here to talk to you about the free projects we would like to do for food service over the summer. This is the, these are free items that are on our spend-down plan, which we talked about at the work session last time. The first one is the E. Wilson Serving Line renovation. So E. Wilson Morrison Elementary Kitchen has a very outdated serving line. It's very much past its useful life. We actually have a cooler that has to be on ice at this time in order to keep its temp. Maintenance has worked on it several times, but it's, it's not feasible anymore. So that was one of the reasons why we started looking at it to, maybe we were just going to potentially just replace that cooler area. But then when we got to really looking at it, the serving line, the amount of meals that we're serving with the CEP, and E. Wilson's a very busy school anyway, has very high enrollment for an elementary school. We were looking at the way the serving line is. We think that new equipment for the whole entire serving line is, it's time. It's just time. We're going to add a hot well. There is, if you pull, you can pull it up if you want to see. We're going to add an additional hot well, and we're going to add a cold well to the, where the server stands. And then currently, if you pull up the picture, there are cold wells, but there's also a pillar behind that that's not in the drawing. And so it's very hard for the staff to serve out of that cold well. So we are going to extend where the students can serve themselves some cold items that would be more like, maybe an apple and orange, or something that's bagged, like a craisin or a raisin, out of those other two cold wells that are kind of out projected. So it would just be a completely new serving line. It will look beautiful, and it will be a much better flow. And this server will be able to hand the tray to the student without reaching over top of food, which will be much safer as well. So the whole layout will be much better. The cost of this renovation at E. Wilson is $86,995.12. We did get four quotes because these are kind of a date projects. This will cover the, all of the replacement plus removal of the current equipment. This will, of that, and so. And we will do the work this summer. Any question?
Was this money already budgeted?
Yes. We do have an access, and we're on the spend-down plan, so this was budgeted and approved through our MEOE spend-down plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And the other ones too, the next?
Yes, they are, yes.
And to be clear, this is not adding to our tax increase locally. This is a different pot of money.
Correct, correct. This money is already available as an incentive, correct. This is not adding to the tax dollar.
Make sure everybody knows.
Yes, correct.
Any additional questions from simply? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approved the MTS quote to replace the serving line at E. Wilson Morrison Elementary Kitchen in the amount of $86,995.12.
Is there a second?
A second?
Any discussion on that? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Thank you. Ms. Kenzie?
Thank you. AS Roads also has an outdated serving line. This line was not replaced during its renovation. We would like to replace the equipment there. This equipment is definitely going to allow for a faster and more efficient flow through the serving line. It will give more space on the serving line. It will also give more cold wells on the serving line. Currently, they only have two, a space for two full-size pans, and we offer two cold entrees, so a sub and a salad. And then we also have cold sides, technically cold fruits and veggies, and we really don't have room at AS Roads for those things right now. So this will add additional cold wells. It really will be the same flow. It will just add more serving space. Also, we'll add a tray slide, again, where the server will not be reaching over food because at all three of these schools, we actually have servers reaching over food to hand kids trays. And so we're really trying to just expand. And this cost of this project is $38,759.77 because it's smaller.
Any questions for Ms. Kenzie?
And I do, that one, that one is attached as well, that photo.
I have one small question.
Sure.
For all these projects in the kitchen, I would imagine you ask the people who work in the kitchen whether this is a good idea or not.
Absolutely, yes. And so we got all their opinions, you know, how the layout would flow better for them and how they, how they would feel if they had this additional space, you know, because obviously, they're working there every day. So, yes, they're very excited to be done.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approved the MTS quote to replace the serving line at AS Roads Elementary Kitchen in the amount of $38,759.77.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Thank you.
And this, the last one, the, for some reason, the drawing wasn't attached. I did bring you a copy. If you would like a copy of the drawing, if you want me to pass that down.
It's on. Oh, it's on.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it when I double-checked it, and I cleaned it on, and I, I just, maybe I missed it. Again, Compton J. Barber has an outdated serving line. This is actually from the construction of the, of the building. So it's a little over 20 years, I think. This will also expand the serving line, add that tray slide area, and allow for faster service. We're also bumping out the, during COVID, we moved the cash registers to several schools behind the serving line, which actually gave an additional helper behind the serving line because the cashiers were sometimes outside of the serving line. So we're bumping the cashier up a little bit so that that person can be a little bit closer to the student so they can kind of reach if the student needs help with the pin pad or something of that nature. So again, as Mr. McFadden just asked, did we ask what they needed? That's one of the suggestions that the cashier was like, well, if we could be just out a little bit further, we could reach better. So those types of things, and we did. So yeah, just expanding, replacing, and then adding out, adding that bump out so that they can be a little bit closer to the student there for the cashier.
Any questions for Ms. Kenzie? Sarah Rushen.
I move that the Warren County School Board
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the MTS quote to replace the serving line at Hilda J. Barber Elementary Kitchen in the amount of $66,349.35.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenzie. You all so much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Next up, we have Board Member requests. I feel like a lot of us have already talked about future work session items, but if anybody has another learning addition they'd like to make at this point.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yay. Oh. Oh, I thought it was eighty. Eight and B.
Oh, grievance consideration school.
Oh, eight B. Oh. He's refreshing.
Yeah.
Well, are there Board Member requests? So it was, it was eight B. I'm sorry, Mr. Valentine, we added.
There you go. Is there now some refresh?
Well, yeah, I guess we just. So back to Board requests. Does anybody have anything that, that we haven't brought up that we want to have added? Great. Then I guess we're going to move on now to eight A, which is the approval of the Personnel Report Addendum, eight A. Is there a motion?
I move that the April 10th, 2024 Personnel Report and Addendum be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. And then next one, the Sill and Sidely Domination.
Yes, they do. I move that our Board request more documentation from staff member to ensure the merits meet state code for showing just cause in failure to meet the grievance hearing filing deadline.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion on that? Just to clarify, this, we are just asking for more, for more documentation.
Documentation of fruit just cause. And then from there, we would make our decision if we would.
We would then.
If it would meet policy standards to, to allow for the.
I would say our goal would be for the April 17 work session, but realizing that's a week turnout.
Right, right.
As it's only one week.
Should we set, should we set a deadline? I mean, I feel like the week is a little bit short, but maybe we could say we prefer, prefer to hear from there.
Then we have May.
Deadline will be the first meeting of May.
If that's reasonable.
Okay.
Okay. Any additional discussion on that? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Can you pass the soda?